Good evening. I am pleased to call together the Salem City Council for the purpose of a work session this evening on our public safety facility planning. And I'd like us to go around and introduce ourselves, and we'll start with our city manager.
Yes, Linda Norris, city manager.
Diana Dickey, Ward 5, City Council.
Cheryl Thomas, Ward 6, City Council.
Bob Cannon, Ward 7, City Council.
Chuck Bennett, Ward 1, City Council.
Brad Nantke, Ward 3.
Rich Clausen, Ward 4.
Chief?
Jerry Moore, Chief of Police.
Would you like to introduce the two deputy chiefs that are here with you?
I would. This is Deputy Chief Jim Ferreras and Deputy Chief Scott Hayes.
Welcome, gentlemen. We're glad you're both here with us tonight. And you too, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Foster, ZGF Architects.
Garth Brandow, CB2 Architects.
Alan Danin, Public Works.
And Courtney Knox with Urban Development.
Excellent.
Yes, I'll go ahead and start this, and I just wanted to remind City Council that around 6:30 we'll go over to the Library Anderson Rooms for council goals. We don't have a hard deadline, so if we're still in good discussion here, if we need to take a few more minutes, that's fine. I wanted to start off just by reminding us of how we got to where we are now, and these are the topics you see on the screen that we'll cover tonight. We have had, the people who've been on council for a few years are aware that we've had a need to replace the deck out here at the Civic Center Plaza for a while, and that cost was estimated to be around $2 million. And before we spent that money to replace the deck, I wanted to have a better idea of what our long-term plans were for this campus and for the building, so that when we spend that money, we spend it in the most practical, effective way possible. So that was part of what we were thinking about. And then a couple of years ago, council adopted a goal to build a new public safety facility and take it out to a vote of the people by November of 2010. As we worked on that and spent more time thinking about it and talking about it, realized that we didn't have enough discussion or information yet about where would that building be, what was it likely to cost, how would it be used, some of those really basic questions. A couple of years ago also, council had allowed us to go out and do a preliminary architectural study of what size building would we need, and what would it look like if it were essentially a single-story building, and if we included courts. And so, we had that study, but when that came back to the subcommittee who was working on it and City Council, it just felt like that was too expensive. It took about two blocks that they were recommending for downtown, and it just didn't seem feasible. So about the time that we had decided that we needed to, we couldn't go out for a ballot measure in November of 2010, but needed to have more detail, we heard about the SCI project, and this is one of the projects that we included, as you know. As we talk, we'll be doing over the next several weeks, work sessions on all of the sustainable city initiative projects, so that you're very familiar with them and have that information. This one is a little different in that we also have a subcommittee working on making recommendation on how we go further with a public safety facility. So I just wanted to do that brief background of why we're looking at this project and how we got to this point. And I think now we'll turn it over to the staff team to lead you through the presentation.
Well, I'll go ahead and get started, Mayor. Council, thank you for this opportunity. As you probably know, since the Civic Center was constructed in 1972, the city has grown both in terms of population and geography. The doubling in population of our city has had a significant impact on all city services, but of course, police services included, and a corresponding impact on our staffing and the need to respond to the issues of this community. In 1972, the population of the city was 74,000, and we had 108 police officers. By 2010, the population had grown to about 154,000 people, and the police department consisted of 192 officers, 48 civilian staff, 130 volunteers, and a 911 center located off-site with 56 employees. I know several of you have had the opportunity to visit our facility over the years and are certainly well aware of the space constraints and overcrowded conditions, and it is clear this police department has outgrown what was probably a wonderful facility in 1972. Currently, the police force is located in multiple locations, and it's clear that the Civic Center is the hub for police operations. Our patrol force, our administrative division, and the investigations divisions are all located in the Civic Center. Briefings, debriefings, communications between units, and coordination of both patrol and investigative operations all occur in this facility. Our equipment, vehicles, meeting space, records, and training all are coordinated within this space. And unfortunately, as the pictures you're observing here in the next few slides depict, they show we've simply run out of room. You know, we are often asked why we need a new facility, and quite frankly, the current location fails or falls considerably short of what a modern, fully-functional police department would consist of. I'll give you just a few examples and reasons why we think that's the case, other than just space. The current facility does not meet state and federal seismic standards for a critical emergency response facility, which means that the community's first responders may not be able to get out of this building to respond to a seismic event. Concerns for the safety of our officers and the community when in this police facility also exist. For example, department of security is minimal, and normal police department amenities such as holding cells for prisoners or suspects do not exist in our facility. The current configuration of our space requires us to transport criminals to court using the same elevators that someone might be using when they come down to get a building permit or visit some other city department. The space we have is antiquated, as you can see, and not designed for our day-to-day operations. And at a real annual cost, we are actually leasing more space outside of this facility than we have on-site. Other examples of our issues would include inadequate parking, little storage space, no room for growth, one small conference room for the entire police department, inadequate workstations, and little or no separation between suspects and citizens within our police department. Our goals are fairly simple. We want to provide better customer service through a more efficient operation. We want to provide our employees with a safe environment in which to work. We want to provide our citizens better access to their police department and its services, and we want to meet essential service-building, seismic safety needs. As the city manager indicated, with council's direction, we've been working on this issue for some time. In fiscal year 2006 or 2007, the city budget recognized the need for a new public safety building. And in 2007, through a study by Berry Architects of the space needs for police in our communication center, it became clear that a new location was merited. Since that study, as I know many of you recall it, we've actually scaled back and refined the size based on what we've learned from visiting other police facilities that had just been built, and what we thought were the needs of this community. In 2009, we also reported to council on some community polling to gauge how successful a police facility bond measure might be. We learned that while the police department enjoys favorable opinion of many in our community, the need for new facility was not well-understood, and community members wanted more specific information as to the location, the cost, the size, and the scale of the project before they could feel comfortable lending their support to a bond measure. I would also remind you, the council listed a bond measure for a new police facility as one of their goals in 2009, and at subsequent finance committee meetings, the bond measure issue came up, and the group felt that constructing a police facility on the Civic Center location or campus would result in lower costs, in a lower-cost project, and would show appropriate use of our existing city center facility. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Thank you. I'll be describing for you a little bit of our more recent progress working through the SCI program at the University of Oregon, as well as in conjunction with the council subcommittee on this project. What you're going to learn about this evening is the result of three months of space needs studies that was done by ZGF and CB2 in preparation for the students to come and start thinking about this problem, how to try to put a new public safety facility on this campus without disturbing too much of the existing campus activities, and yet also trying to enhance public access to the City Hall and other facilities. The students, there were 40 of them, they were representing architecture and interiors architecture, and they spent three months thinking about all of these issues for us, very diligently, and lots of effort, and we have some images to share with you tonight of their resulting work. Subsequent to that, we spent four months with the council subcommittee, thinking through the design, refining the cost estimates, investigating some of the beginnings of feasibility discussion, and so tonight, we're going to report to you on that progress. Quickly, just a quick reminder, there is no decision tonight. We're going to be coming back on the 23rd, asking if you're interested in funding some alternatives analysis. And so this is just background for that decision coming up. As I mentioned, there were two courses, Architecture and Interiors Architecture, and they were tasked with this idea of trying to fit a new public safety facility on what we affectionately refer to as Sites A, B, and C. A is thinking around Mirror Pond, B is thinking about the space in between Mirror Pond and our existing Civic Center facility, and then C is thinking about a new facility to be in and around Peace Plaza. So those were the constraints that we gave them. We asked them to improve the density of use on the site, and we asked them to think about how to incorporate some of the seismic needs we were aware of as a result of a 2006 study, and try to improve some of the seismic character of this facility, while enhancing public access and wayfinding and access to services. So the interesting picture is the result of the programming and circulation needs study, or how much space does a public safety facility really need, and what kinds of entrance or access is needed. There's a public use component, but there's also a secure and special functions component. And so, the students had to grapple with all of that, and also try to fit it on campus. So what we knew going into the student work is that we were looking for a facility to be about 75,000 square feet, and we knew the police facility needed secured parking and street access. And we were hoping that there might be a way to create sort of an entry to campus. That's one of the things that we hear often from visitors who come to City Hall, is it's difficult to figure out where the front door is, it's difficult to figure out how to get around inside it. And we thought that there might be some opportunities to enhance the public experience through the development of a new police facility. They were also instructed that if they disturbed anything, like the Peace Plaza fountain, that they had to replace it elsewhere on the campus. So anything that they disturbed needed to be replaced. So the majority of students focused on the north location, but those that played around with a design inside Peace Plaza recognized that it had the added benefit of making Peace Plaza a place where more people might gather. There was an opportunity to potentially put parking below the plaza and create a stronger connection on the campus to City Hall and the library. However, it required a taller building, significantly taller, which made some of the police functions a little bit more difficult to work, given some of the operational needs. And it made the building also difficult to see, so we didn't get any of that benefit of having a street presence. And sometimes, it blocked east-west pathways. A lot of people use campus, City Hall campus, to get through campus to get to other locations. And if you have a building right in the middle of Peace Plaza, it can prevent some of that milling about. So the north location had the advantage of creating a sort of a new entrance or a new facade to City Hall, potentially. And there was also an opportunity to reactivate the atrium space and create more of a gateway or a campus feel to City Hall overall. However, depending on the place, the placement of the new facility, you could block the north-south campus connections. And so these were all issues that the students were struggling with as they were designing buildings. And here are some of the images from the student work. Keep in mind, there were 40 students, but what you see is sort of a flavor of their work. They tried to have atrium open feelings. Most of that is a function of trying to incorporate some sustainable design principles, things like natural light, cross-ventilation, operable windows. They also had a lot of solar panels, living roofs, and rainwater collection devices throughout their designs. But this just sort of gives you a flavor of some of the thinking that they were doing. The picture at the top on the right is actually of activating Peace Plaza. That's a proposal to put council chambers facility in Peace Plaza. And most of these designs also tried to enhance the street presence. Another criticism that we have heard is that our back doors are sort of to the street, and so the students were trying to put our front door out onto the street and help people find us. This continues some of that theme, sort of creating an entrance to campus. A lot of different visuals here. You can see in the bottom left corner, that's a building that would actually go directly across where the parking facility is now, and would potentially cut campus in half, but that's another idea. And then the building on the top left, this student actually chose to place it on the lawn adjacent to the fire station instead of one of the three locations that we gave. So lots of innovative thinking. On the interiors side, so these were a different group of students thinking about the building as it works, and so if the police vacate, it creates space adequate enough to bring the off-site uses back into City Hall. And so they were focused on thinking about how to manage the seismic issues with the building, and how to create a more active space, active-engaging space, while trying to make some of the department uses a little bit more efficient and creating more public access. So some of their ideas were to place reception areas for all of our vital city services on the main floor, and then have circulation inside departments. So if, so for example, the PAC, the Permit Application Center, would be on the main floor, and then the supporting Public Works and Community Development staff would be above the public access through internal stairways. And the internal stairways have a benefit of potentially enhancing some of the seismic character of the building. They also looked a lot at filling the atrium. They called it a void. They stuck meeting spaces and mostly glass kind of chambers, which would be difficult for sound and some other issues, and cafes out into the atrium space. And many of these ideas will help us when we're thinking about sort of a longer-term facility management plan for the Civic Center facility. So now, what we did with all of this, we're going to talk to Mark and Garth a little bit more about how that idea evolved.
So, we had roughly 20 architecture students, and I'm going to focus on the architectural work, big-picture gestures. And we spent, I don't know, a few weeks internally and then with the subcommittee, looking at all of that work and extracting from it sort of five or six key points, pieces from all of the different students' works, things that in our discussions with representatives from the police department and the city, all seemed to have some viability to them. And the first one, and Courtney mentioned it earlier, was the idea that really, the north site, and you can see on the bottom-right image, if you have a building that is only three floors, and that was driven by the organizational requirements of the police department, breaking them into even smaller units was a problem. This was the only place that you could really, you could really put it. You know, if you, we'll show you a plan a little bit later, and if you imagine taking that block and trying to put it between the library and City Hall, it would fill up the entire Peace Plaza. I mean, there just wasn't any other, any room for it. So that was, that was the first gesture. The complementary piece here was that this, the room we are in now, and the pieces of the atrium canopy and the structure right outside this building, these are major contributors to the seismic problem. There's a lot of concrete up in the air, and when it shakes, it drops. So the costs associated with that are significant. So if those are removed, it does a couple of things, removes the costs needed to improve them, but it also then opens up the space from the atrium out to this building to the north. So it helps connect the new building, and there was discussion about making this a unified campus. So that was another key element. There is a requirement for secure police parking, and there's also public parking. Right now, they're mixed, and we hoped we could make some progress in that, separate the two. And the idea is to reuse the hole in the ground where the parking exists today under this building. The seismic quality of the existing structure is not very good. There's a lot of cost involved there also. So it was to replace that parking and the circulation, to make it secure police parking goes underneath the proposed building. And here, pretty much in exactly the same place you have now, the excavation has already been done, because there's a building there now. So that's where you would have police parking. And then, another item that came up was parking underneath Peace Plaza, and that was typically, from the students, that had a building on top of it. Well, we've removed the building, but it seemed that at first glance, that maybe that was a good place to pick up the public parking. And perhaps there was also the opportunity, since we have earlier demolished the council chambers, let's put the council chambers between the two buildings, so we can get some activity between the library and City Hall without filling the whole space, and get some additional visibility along the street, along commercial, so we have a pretty strong edge built along here. We'd keep the fountain and the garden at the other end, and you'd have a smaller area in the middle. One other critical component, right now, you know, you have a turnaround at the library. You can pull in off of Liberty, drop off, or go to parking. And what this does is provides another one, another turnaround, roughly just to the north of the, where the cafe is in that east wing of City Hall, so that you now have a sort of a drop-off right at the front door at the plaza that links the police facility and the City Hall. And from here, there would be access to the parking below for the police, and a small on-grade parking area for the public. And then, along both sides, there could be covered walkways that link the buildings, link parking, and provide weather protection. You want to go to the next slide, please? So we talked a little bit about already, and you can see it here, also removing the canopy between the wings of City Hall. And we made police access at the north end, and then I was just talking a minute ago about the access on the other side of the site. With those two access points, then we removed the access ramp between City Hall and the new police station, so that that could be a public at-grade entrance to the plaza, and it wouldn't separate the two buildings. So those were the, sort of five or six big-picture items. One of the things, before I pass this off to Garth, we also then created sort of a major building entrance facing commercial, and there's a little drop-off there. So coming from either side, you have a way to park, short-term parking and major entrances to the building facing the street, not just facing the courtyard. So this was sort of, as we passed through all the student work, we pulled out all of these things, put them together in a basic plan, and then we spent some time going through that plan and kind of evaluating those at another level of detail, and Garth is going to talk about those.
Thanks, Mark. I'll just go ahead and continue with what Mark was stating. It's probably easiest just to look at the campus on a simple plan standpoint, and this really, I think, starts to tell you a little bit of the story about how we really wanted to integrate the campus. Again, it served a wonderful public benefit, Civic Center being built 40 years ago. And again, I think we'd be remiss as architects if we didn't want to make this very clear and obvious point, and that is that built 40 years ago, and you've had really great, useful life for 40 years. It's really, really quite remarkable. The public has been served very, very well. And so, when looking at the next, you know, what is the next best use or way to accommodate future growth and future use, the campus itself is, as we all know, is very, very special, but it needs to integrate a little bit better. The new police facility, instead of just trying to cram it onto the campus somewhere, we really felt that this opportunity to interconnect could really be achieved by a couple really pretty simple moves. And as Mark has mentioned before, and I really wanted to reinforce how important it would be by removing the canopy that has been, you know, a little bit of a leak issue lately, as Mark has mentioned, a seismic issue. These two features right now, between the council chambers, which is located here, and removal of the canopy roof there, would have the very, very strong opportunity to really open up and engage the City Hall, the Civic Center, integrating the public safety facility, and really opening that up to downtown. Right now, it's a closed environment. You happen to have the one connector piece of building, which is pretty interesting, that it's the council chambers, which is the block, you know, really, more or less the windowless block, because that's the purpose it serves, it's an internal use, that happens to be blocking that connectivity to downtown. It's just a very simple, but very, very important point that we really want to reinforce, how dramatically different the campus would be with removal of where we're at. And so I would encourage you, as you're leaving, going for a break tonight, come out of the walkway, look downtown, look out onto the Mirror Pond area, look out there, imagine a new public safety building being built that really starts to engage Liberty Street, and with an entrance element itself, and then how connective this would be all the way through the natural open areas of City Hall, all the way back to the library. So that was really an important thing. We wanted to impress upon this whole So that was really an important thing we wanted to impress upon this whole exercise. The students captured it in different degrees. We looked at that over several months about how to simplify, how it could really work and still be economical to build and create, and that's what we concluded. The other thing that we looked at is over in the Peace Plaza. Originally, it seemed that a good use of that space would be to have a parking element underneath a new plaza, meaning tear out the plaza, put parking underneath, and put a new plaza on top. Our feeling on that is that that was really not an effective way to gain 100 parking spaces, and it was very expensive. And so we went back and looked at another approach where we could use some existing drives off of Liberty Street without destroying integrity within Peace Plaza, but also by adding some surface parking here for primarily visitor parking, because right now, there's very few visitor parking spaces on the campus. So by adding surface parking, the most inexpensive way possible, in this location off of Liberty Street, another addition of a few adjacent to where a council chambers, new council chambers could be off of Liberty Street, excuse me, Commercial Street, the 40 spaces, the 12 spaces off of Liberty Street next to the council chambers, and then another 15 plus or minus spaces at the new drop off that Mark mentioned off of Liberty Street. Now all of a sudden, you have visitor parking more than you have right now, but now that's a way to include those in a more cost-effective way. And so we kind of ruled out the idea of really disrupting with underground parking in this location to really keep the energy of connecting through the campus with a common plaza element. And instead of a pretty scaleless space, now all of a sudden, it's activated with additional activity. And so our conclusion was that was a way that you could achieve placing the program on the campus, yet also stimulate that activity that doesn't exist now, and probably most important of all, is to really offer a front door and a welcomeness that doesn't exist today. And that's my story. I'm sure we'll have more questions later.
I just wanted to point out, and one other difference in this plan, we moved the council chamber from the west side to the east side in Peace Plaza. Brought it up the hill. It let us have more effective parking on this side, and now we have a new piece of the campus facing Liberty and a new one facing Commercial. So you got, you sort of covered both directions, and I think took better use of the existing site between the buildings. Give you a more prominent location for the council chambers.
And it's probably important to point out, again, the access issues or the challenges that you have here, because with the police facility, the ability to be able to get out to both Liberty and Commercial, Liberty and Commercial is extremely important. Right now, you effectively have a street that connects between Liberty and Commercial, which serves as another barrier on your campus, right? So what we did, as Mark had mentioned, is by eliminating this access point, the police parking, which is secure underneath the new police building above grade, and then the below grade parking for the police facility here, that parking element can connect through from Commercial Street and then also connect around and get out to Commercial Street, or excuse me, Liberty Street. So that way, you can still, the police can still have direct access to either Commercial or Liberty, but the public is really, has an ability to come off of Commercial Street more in the Peace Plaza area, and then have more of your central drop off area, if you wish, off of Liberty Street. So that's a very important challenge and limitation that you have on the campus.
Thanks, Garth and Mark. So my job is to provide a summary of the discussions that happened with the council subcommittee through the course of the project here, and talk a little bit about next steps going forward for the public safety facility. So first and foremost, even though it sounds simple, a pretty important finding here was that the public safety facility can fit on this site, and it would function well and meet the police's operational needs. That's a pretty significant change in thinking for us in that really all our efforts up until the SCI project were focused at looking for exterior sites. So a pretty basic but important finding going forward. Parking was another major piece of discussion, of course, and Garth summarized very well some of the thinking there. Initially, we, because of the current parking issues, the direction was try to maximize parking as much as you can. And so that's where the underground parking structure under Peace Plaza came into play. But the committee, in looking at all that, really said that $6 million price tag for that underground structure wasn't justified because in implementing some of the improvements on-grade that Garth identified, we still have a net gain between those and the parking structure and the police facility of over 100 public parking spaces. So they just felt like, we get that net gain, it's not worth the additional $6 million to pursue any more than that. Another major topic of discussion was seismic retrofit of the existing civic center. And there was some heightened perspective on this because of the earthquake in Japan, which occurred right while we were talking about this issue. The basis of this discussion was a report done in 2006, so the numbers that I talk about and the findings that I talk about come from that report. You really have two choices when you're looking at the existing civic center in terms of upgrading the facility, and it has to do with what standard are you going to upgrade to. There's an immediate occupancy standard, which does just like it sounds, allows the building to continue to operate immediately after a seismic event occurs, so our operations can go on, and emergency response can happen out of the building and with a minimum of disruption in that type of event. That comes at a more expensive cost, of course. The other option is a fire and life safety standard, which preserves the structural integrity of the building, but after the seismic event, it can't be reoccupied, reused until repairs have been made so that it's safe for another seismic event. And the difference in those two in terms of construction is about $3 million. So the committee looked at that, and they talked about it a lot. And another important piece of the puzzle here is when the police move out, there's opportunity for other city departments to move back into the first floor that they currently occupy. But to make that space usable, it's really several million dollars of improvements necessary. When folks are out, now's the time to upgrade all the systems and really get it ready for occupancy. So we could preserve that investment with an additional $3 million and keep it moving forward, even in the event of a seismic event, that investment continues, and we add additional years of life to the building. Go ahead and hit the next slide. Great. Again, as Garth and Mark were pointing out, in looking at the north side of the civic center, the one sort of unavoidable fact is to make this scheme work. The existing parking structure and council chambers are in the way, and so they would have to be demolished. However, that comes with an opportunity as well. As part of that 2006 study, about $3 million of the costs that were identified there really were needed to upgrade this chambers facility and the parking structure, both to fix seismic issues and repair the leaks. So as Linda pointed out in her early remarks, there's an opportunity here to, instead of just fixing the issues that already exist, sort of leverage those costs, those cost liabilities that we already have into the new public safety facility project. Similarly, with the atrium removal, there's another million and a half in seismic repairs required there, that again, by taking that out, you remove that liability and can contribute towards the project. One other point that, to reinforce that Courtney made that came from the SCI students is with the seismic work on the existing building, there's an opportunity to incorporate vertical circulation or stairways and improve movement up and down between stories. With the new chambers, the current scheme that Garth and Mark showed, shows it in the Peace Plaza, but really, there's other alternatives that have been discussed as well. It could be incorporated into the new police facility, or other alternate locations could be pursued. Those are basically cost neutral with the costs that we have right now, so you could look at what's best efficient and what really adds the most value to the overall project to make that decision. So looking ahead, I wanted to provide just a little bit of context where we are with this project and sort of the typical lifespan of a project. And in thinking about the steps that you go through on any project, there's really five. The first thing that you do is define your problem. The next thing then is to identify the solutions to that problem and define them to the point that you know how much it costs to solve the problem. Once you're able to secure funding, then you design and construct the project, and then I guess there's a sixth step, you move in and use it. So really, where we are with this project, the problem is well-defined. Chief Moore's slides show the problems that the police department faces, and we've talked about the seismic issues as well. And we've made tremendous progress with the SCI and the work that Garth and Mark have done to define the solutions that we have. There's a few steps there that I'll hit in the next couple of slides to really finish that definition of our solution and identifying the costs. Then we can move into the securing funding phase. In this case, we're talking about asking the voters to approve a bond. So some of the steps there, we would conduct a pulse of the community, do some polling to really get a sense of their support and help tailor our outreach in the future so we understand what their key issues are, and we can tailor our outreach to address those. There's a formal actions that occur at council, a public hearing, and then approval of a ballot measure to submit to the county for the ballot. And then, of course, it's only one line on here, but it's an intense amount of activity. There's the outreach and education of the community to try to gain their support so they vote in favor on Election Day. So to finish up our definition of the solution, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the trend that we've got going here. Chief Moore mentioned the Berry Study back in 2007, which started out at nearly twice the square footages that we're talking about today. And the police department really did some hard work in looking at what their actual space needs were before the SCI project started. They've come down to about a 75,000 square foot building that they think meets their needs going into the future. But with everything else that we talked about with the project, seismic upgrades, the site work, et cetera, that initial all-in option for the site was in the neighborhood of $70 million. Again, this is very early, probably plus or minus 10% in terms of confidence on that, but that's where we were. So the subcommittee looked at that in some detail, and that's really when a lot of these column value engineering options started to come into play, looking at underground parking, what level of seismic makes sense. And so the options that are on the table right now are in the neighborhood of $55 to $61 million. But again, still very early in design, lots of assumptions, and being very conservative at this point so that we don't miss anything. Some of the key steps going forward in looking at feasibility will help us tighten that up and hopefully continue the trend towards bringing the costs down. So on April 11th, a funding request for additional feasibility measures for the existing site was approved at council. That was going to include seismic analysis of the existing building in light of the new plan that we've discussed. That will define our need going forward, whether the public safety facility continues or not. Those issues will remain for this site, and it gives us a good definition of what we've got to deal with here regardless. If the public safety facility continues on this site, then we can incorporate those into our cost estimating and refine them even further. Finally, as Courtney mentioned, on May 23rd, we'll come back to council with a funding request for an analysis of alternative sites to go, to provide comparison to the civic center site. And this really is to answer the question that kind of continually came up during SCI and after, is does this, how does this compare with finding some bare land off-site or a building to retrofit off-site? So that's what we would do, is go out and take a look at some of those options and provide that comparison. And really, the major difference, if you think about it, between the two options is here, you're on a compact, tight site that really requires that underground parking if you're going to meet your parking needs. Whereas if you can find a site somewhere with more room, you can build that parking on-grade at less cost, but there's the question of what does it cost to acquire that site? So that's really what we can hopefully get to the bottom of, is how does that balance between those two? Some other things that will have to be considered there is, if you do go offsite, the seismic issues that we have the opportunity to address with the project here at the civic center site remain. So, you know, 2006 total estimate of seismic needs here on-site was about $12.5 million. Those needs would remain if the public safety facility goes someplace else. And then also, there's at least some analysis that probably can't be made at a cost level, but thinking about what the operational differences are in terms of having a facility that's potentially far away from the rest of the city operations. One last, so that's what you'll see on the 23rd. One important point about that is it adds about three months into the timeline that we haven't been thinking about. And so in looking at where that puts us in terms of an election, it really means 2013 is probably the most likely earliest time that we could take this to the voters in order to leave ourselves at least 12 months for a campaign. So lastly, just to kind of summarize the critical path going forward, on May 23rd, the funding request for the alternative site analysis, we would expect to come back to council in a work session this fall, probably in September, with the findings of both that site analysis and the additional feasibility work that we will have done on the civic center site. Then moving forward from there, we could refine our design and cost estimates to really start to get to a level of reliability where we felt like we could put together a solid number for a bond measure. We could also start to lay the groundwork for securing the funding for the project. So we'd do some more polling, see where we are with the community, and start to pull together our group of stakeholders to support the project. And hopefully, if the project goes forward and the voters approve it, we'd move on into design and construction. That kind of summarizes where we're headed from here, and I'll turn it over to Chief Moore to wrap it up.
Well, I want to thank Alan and Courtney and Garth and Mark for their presentation. I'm going to assume there may be some questions out there because I can tell you, we've had lots of questions as we've gone through this process. So I appreciate your attention today, and I guess, city manager would like, we'll open it up for questions.
Okay. All right, sorry. All right. Are there questions from counselors? I think, did Brad Nanki have his hand up first? Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Clausen, I'm sorry. And I think I saw someone over here, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks.
Two questions. One, we had a D2 circle on Mirror Pond, which is either demolition or site improvements. Curious as to what that actually meant in this case?
Probably means site improvements. I suspect it will be modified a little bit, the extent of the pond.
To accommodate the foot car?
To accommodate the building.
Okay. And then secondly, something that's glaringly missing from that is the parking structure to the south of the library. Did we evaluate that at all? What is its seismic structure right now, and could you build another two on top? It is fairly large, it could be a new front door as well, based on a cross street versus everybody dropping from the side. Not to say that that would be the place for the new police facility, but as far as incorporating council chambers up above or something like that as well.
I don't know if that was included in their seismic report, no. We didn't include it. The majority of the parking in this is dedicated to the police, and so that needed to be adjacent to the building. we could to make the remainder, you know, modest improvements in multiple places to get surface, an increase in surface parking. So we really didn't, partly because of proximity and also because it was structured parking or building that would be required for that, for anything using the existing structure. But that went into our part, total parking counts. It didn't change existing parking that's available in the facility.
And one other last one, if I could, did we look at converting the library and relocating it? Is it easier to reconfigure it and have a different place for the library?
We didn't. And SCI group did not, as far as I know.
I don't think we've looked at that.
Okay. Just to see if we'd looked at that option. Thanks.
Counselor Clausen?
I have a couple of questions. How many square feet do we lease now as part of police facility? And if you don't have it, I don't need it right now.
I think, was it 100 and?
I've got it. The, the police department leases right now, or has off-site about 19,000 square feet. So, in the neighborhood of the same amount of space they have here on the first floor.
Okay. That was my next question, is how many square feet do we use now here?
It's about 27, I think.
About 27? And how many square feet is the current proposal? I missed that.
75.
75 is the current proposal? Okay.
Hold on, do you?
And, the other, my last question was, is staff parking on this diagram included with the police secure parking?
Some of it. There is parking directly under the courtyard right now. And that would be retained for council and mayor and, so as much as possible in, in that level. So the answer for that is yes, it is included, some of it is included in the structured parking.
So the parking spaces, we see the 15, 12, 30, and 40, that's all public parking and staff wouldn't necessarily be parking there. Those are available for public at any time? Okay.
Well, ultimately, you know, we're not going to be in charge of the parking program on the site.
Well, yeah.
Confirm that it will always be that way?
There's probably some, some adjustments into how things work for the site that'll have to be made as, as this goes forward. But one other thing to point out is the library structure has about 292 total spaces, about half permit and half metered right now. So, there's some ability there to look at overflow and how to, how to make that work. Especially, you know, if you think about the council chambers on the Peace Plaza site, there's a fairly close connection. If parking nearby is full for, for a big event at the council chambers, it's not too much further to go to the library.
Big events.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dickey?
Thanks. Thanks for your presentation. That was really good. I question, kind of going off Counselor Clausen, in terms of how much space that we lease, I, I think I understood that, you know, a 75,000 square foot police facility then would open up some more space where the current police station is for other city departments to move in. Do you know how many total square feet we lease that would not have to be leased with this model? If you don't have that today, just sometime would be really helpful.
I, I do have it actually, but Chief Moore has my sheet. So, the two that we've been looking at primarily are Salmon Run and Urban Development and Parking Services. So those, those totals come out to, Salmon Run's just under 12,000 square feet, and Urban Development plus Parking Services is about 8,000 square feet. So that's almost 20,000 square feet of additional off-site departments, which really, if the first floor here is about 27, there's a pretty good balance there.
Plus the additional 20,000 for, 19,000 for the police department. So about 40,000 square feet would not be leased.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. Okay. And then my other question, kind of has to do with, was there any talk of a jail being added to that police facility?
Well, there's been talk about, in light of current events, we, we've certainly discussed that recently. I would say our initial look at it included holding cells, which we desperately need, but did not include a full-time jail. And I think over the course of the next year or so, that's something we will certainly take a look at. Whether, it probably wouldn't be a large facility, but it might be large enough to house prisoners, if you will, from municipal court or some of those.
Okay. I believe Counselor Cannon and then Counselor Bennett?
My questions have been answered. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had the same question on holding cells, because I remember the, the old apartment, when it was built, had holding cells in it. I don't know what you use them for now, but...
Well, it's been used for a variety of things. It, at one point, it was actually a city jail, and then it was a federal facility.
Right.
And then it was, it was actually my office when I created the Street Crimes Unit, which was kind of interesting. And then it was, and then it was the WVCC, it was our 911 center. And currently, it is a small training room and office space for several of our investigative units.
One of the elements missing, along with the library parking, is what, how windows to the west fits into this? Whether it represents surface parking for employees or what, what does it, how does it integrate into this plan?
You know, we haven't gotten to that point yet. I think that's one of the logical places to do surface parking, but we're not far enough along in the design to really know if we would need that. I think if we could use the library parking and what's under the building now and a little bit of the new parking that's created, that still allows the opportunity to do something else with windows to the west.
Okay.
If I could add to that, we, we do know that when the existing parking is demolished and rebuilt, there will be need for a temporary parking location and that...
So it gives us some staging.
It's a very convenient location for everybody that would otherwise be on-site.
Did you look, I, I was taken with just the idea of using the lawn down by the fire station as sort of site D. Did, did that get looked at, or is that just too small?
Yeah. It was, yeah, there were two, two really interesting student proposals. One was the one in the Peace Plaza that looked, looked like it fit just like a glove, maybe four stories or so. Well, you know, again, that's the advantage of being a student and having a little artistic license. We're not allowed to really do that, so we really just ruled that out. The same thing really applied to that location, is that it was really no feasible way that you could fit the entire police function on that, on that site. Although, the student that actually proposed that was, was a very, very good student, and he just, he kept going forward and forward, realized in the end that it wasn't feasible, but, but it was still an outstanding effort that he had made. Yeah, beautiful solution, just wrong site.
There's, there's also, early on, there was a clear preference for immediate proximity between City Hall and the police station. So if we're going to be on-campus, then let's, let's make those connections work so that communication can be as strong as it, as it needs to be with as little effort as possible.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a member of the subcommittee, I, I remember a lot of these twists and turns, and there were several of them, but I'm intrigued by the question about jail space. How many beds would we need to build if our ability to use Marion County Jail is not the same as it has been in the past? Of course, Pope County, there's, we've got plenty of room over there, but jail beds. But how many cells would need to be built and any idea what that would add to the cost?
Well, I don't know what the additional cost would be, and we could certainly find that out and it'd be part of the design structure, I'm, I'm going to guess. You know, I would say today, we could get away with 10 or 12 jail beds, but you have to remember that we are building a facility that we think will last us for, this one has lasted about 40 years. So I think we would have to take that into consideration as well and determine what we think our future needs for a jail facility might be.
Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, just one, the members on the council subcommittee are whom?
And Laura Tesler, Counselor Tesler.
Excellent. Just because we talked about it a couple times.
Did I miss someone, Courtney?
And in addition, Mike McLaren has been participating from the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce, as well as Monte King, representing the Community Police Advising Committee.
Excellent.
All right. All right. Are there further questions? Well, thank you all. Linda, did you want to make some closing comments?
Oh, no, we really do appreciate your time and thought to this, and we'll just keep moving forward each step at a time and see what direction it'd like us to take this.
And to Garth and Mark, thank you for coming for the evening. We appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the work that the staff is doing. This really is a, an extremely important facility for our city. Public safety is a, is an important element of the quality of life here, and I appreciate that you take this so seriously. Thank you. Okay. We are closed.